Good afternoon, everybody. June 11th, 2013. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into special session.
Should I move?
Second.
All in favor of going into special session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is the 19th special session. The first item of business is the introduction of an ordinance amending the city code, section 238-15, to provide for a late fee on water and sewer department bills.
Mr. Mayor hereby move that the mayor and city council introduce an ordinance which amend city code, section 238-15, by the addition of subsection J to read as follows. A late payment charge of 10% will be calculated upon the total charges and applied to the water and wastewater bill or any portion of the bill not paid by the current amount due date. Each subsequent water and wastewater bill not paid in full will be subject to the aforementioned late payment charge on the unpaid balance.
Second.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to introduce ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is an introduction of an ordinance transferring property on Robinwood Drive to the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County.
Mayor hereby move the mayor and city council approve the introduction of an ordinance to transfer property to City of Hagerstown on Robinwood Drive for construction purposes related to the upcoming Robinwood Drive project. The Washington County Board of Commissioners has requested the transfer of point 0593 acres of land, 2,584 square feet, recorded in plat number 100-10-535, which is a portion of parcel, of a parcel utilized as the wastewater division pump station eight. The request is for no monetary compensation.
Second. Would you like to say something?
I just wondered, this is something new for you. I think Mike's material provided a pretty good explanation, you okay?
Yes.
Little bit unusual request, but nothing that didn't make sense to us, so. Anything else you want to add, Mike, or you're good?
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the state of Maryland for $150,000 and authorizing the transfer of $75,000 from the Upper Floors Redevelopment Fund into the Hagerstown Revolving Loan Fund.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move the mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the state of Maryland for $150,000 from the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority Fund, MEDEF, for the Hagerstown Revolving Loan Fund. The resolution further authorizes the transfer of $75,000 from the city's Upper Floors Redevelopment Fund into the Hagerstown Revolving Loan Fund for the required match in connection with the receipt of the grant. The city operates this revolving loan fund to assist in the retention, expansion, and recruitment of businesses within its corporate limits of the city of Hagerstown.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time, we'll adjourn the special session and move into our work session. The first topic of which is the review of our agenda for our regular session scheduled for next week. On the consent agenda is, with the Department of Parks and Engineering, an abatement of debris and weeds and brush contract, $55,000 to $60,000 annually. Any questions on that one? And on the Department of Utilities, Water Division, a flash mixer apparatus repair.
We don't have any question on the other one. It's just sort of strange for that kind of contract, did nobody else bid?
Yeah, it's, we really tried to get more bidders. We even tried to break the mowing out separately from the removal of the trash and debris. But I think the issue is, it's kind of unpredictable work. We have an abatement we have to do, and we call the contractor. We have, next week, we have five abatements we've got to do, they call the contractor. So I guess they really can't plan the work, and some people aren't interested in it then.
Okay.
That's our explanation.
Okay. Okay, and it's for the abatement, okay.
Yeah.
I understand.
Right. It's not routine work that they do every week, it's abatements.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions on the utilities flash mixer? All right, moving on to the unfinished business. Any questions about the approval of the ordinance, the Police and Fire Retirement Plan, Civil Marriage Protection Act? Any questions on the ordinance involving the recycling and refuse definition of dumpster? Those are all topics we've covered previously. Any questions on the repeal of chapter 184 regarding the portable storage containers, also related to the previous item? Any issues with the parking enforcement amendment? I believe that one was to allow other folks to be able to do parking enforcement besides police officers. How about towing and impounding vehicles illegally parked? Any questions on that one? Any issues with immobilizing or impounding vehicles for unsatisfied summonses or citations? We have the amendment of city code, section 238-15, for the late fee. We just introduced that ordinance. Any issues with the drinking water bond? How about transferring property on Robinwood Drive? We just introduced that ordinance, too. All right, moving on to new business, amending the code for firearms. We're going to be talking about that later today, so we might hold your powder, keep your powder dry for that one.
Yeah, that's an item that hasn't been discussed.
Right. And same thing for the item B, although we had talked about that. Any issues with, it's also on the agenda tonight. Any issues with the smoking ban at University Plaza? Got bicycles and play vehicles on sidewalks.
That's, that's also today.
That's also on tonight's agenda. Introduction of an ordinance amending the city code, chapter 95, for excessive use of police services, amending the definition of board, that's also on tonight's agenda, I believe.
Yes.
Yes.
The next resolution, the Water Quality Financing Administration, for the Wilson Plant Next item is approval of FY14 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, which I think is also on tonight's agenda. Next is the MOU with the HCC Police Academy, also on tonight's agenda. We have the budget transfer for 60 West Washington Street renovation. Any questions on that? We also have on our agenda the approval of the First Third Grant Program.
That's on your agenda.
More about that tonight, on tonight's agenda. Any questions about the transfer of the Police Department vehicle? We also had the approval of workers' comp insurance for fiscal year 2014 and brokerage services. Questions on that one?
Once again, that's what-
Well, again, I think quite a few of those we'll be talking about later.
Actually, this one, I think this, this is on the work session. This is the renewal-
Right.
-with Iowa.
Right.
And the extension for one year with Keller Stonebreaker.
Okay. It was in the packet.
It's in the packet, outlines the costs.
Okay.
Yeah, we would not be voting in favor. The approval of liability property premium, it's item M. And under new business is the Medical Administrative Fees Administration for this coming fiscal year. Also the approval of the 2013 pavement preservation program and the civilian recruitment and training coordinator for the Police Department, which is an item we've discussed previously. Any issues at all about the agenda for next week? All right. Moving on. Item two on our work session agenda, proposed changes to bicycle or play vehicle ordinance. Do we have our chief, please, here? We are a little ahead of schedule, so we could move on to item five on the agenda, which would be the CDBG Annual Action Plan. Go ahead and move to that item.
Wanted to discuss with the mayor and council today, the CDBG entitlement for the next fiscal year. We finally received confirmation from Housing and Urban Development of our award for fiscal year 2014. It's actually come in a little bit higher than we initially anticipated, which is good news after enduring two years of reduced entitlement amounts, drastically reduced entitlement amounts. Our budget was conservative. We had budgeted $600,000 as our anticipated entitlement from the CDBG program. It actually came in at $666,490. So we have $66,490 to allocate for the next fiscal year before we can turn in our annual action plan, which is time sensitive at this point, and it's due next week. So staff wanted to present this to the mayor and council, the two recommendations for using the $66,490 in fiscal year 2014. And what we had presented was a two-pronged approach to, as a way to attack some of the vacant properties, some of the problems we have with nuisance conditions at these vacant properties in the city. And one of the ways that we would look to do that is by implementing a part-time code inspector, which is an eligible use of community development block grant funds. And the other aspect would be rolling some of that funding into our home ownership program, which is a program that we've used in the past, successfully occupying old homes that were dilapidated and vacant, where we would purchase the homes, renovate with CDBG funds, and occupy with an owner occupant. And Paul, if you want to talk a little bit more about the role of the potential part-time inspector position and what you envision that this inspector would take care of?
The part-time inspector is, the goal to react quicker to when we get concerns from citizens and to protect our neighborhoods, so we can be quicker to respond, address concerns as quickly as possible, to get issues as far as high weeds, rubbish on property, garbage, trash enforcement, things of that nature.
What'd be for both single family and multifamily?
Yes.
Commercial?
Yes.
So across the board?
Yes, across the board.
Across the board.
How part-time is part-time?
We're envisioning between 20 and 25 hours a week.
How many inspectors do you have currently doing those kinds of things?
We have three full-time and one part-time.
And I know you're very busy, and this is also, we just celebrated service awards with city employees, and Mr. Falk has been with the city now for 10 years, so I want to thank him for his service with the city. How many homes have been rehabbed and occupied with the home ownership program and housing rehabilitation?
I would have to dig those numbers up for you, but I would say it's somewhere in the realm of 30 to 40 homes, maybe, over the last two decades. Don't quote me on that. I'll find that number exactly for you.
If you could, that'd be interesting data to have.
Do we still have homes for sale?
Yes, we do have four half, double units for sale on Jonathan Street, and we anticipate disposing of them in fiscal year 2014. And what we're looking for at the new renovations, we're looking at a revamp program. Traditionally, the home ownership program would take homes, renovate to the existing floor plan, nice renovations, you know, typical upgrades. We're looking to maybe go in a unique direction with renovations that would create loft-style, open living space style units to maybe attract homeowners that would gobble these properties up quickly, as opposed to having them sit for years vacant for sale.
Do you have any idea about the 2015 federal funding?
Not at this time.
Is it subject to a further congressional action, or is it a HUD allocation?
It would be subject to the next budget from Congress, but I could have a discussion with our HUD representative to see if we have any indication on where that would end up next fiscal year. That would be our fiscal year 2015.
Does this program have any potential to help Mr. Smith down on Locust Street?
It very well could.
Okay, good.
It would be targeting homes such as the ones that are around Mr. Smith's home.
They ought to be cheap.
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the use of these additional funds for what I would call the restabilization of the vacant properties within these traditionally older neighborhoods. I guess I get the part of the, you know, part of the funding going toward an individual that would better identify these locations as they, you know, pop up over the course of the year, but I'm not certain I understand fully the additional $36,490 for home ownership. The, the thought here, I'm assuming, isn't that we're going to identify these places for the CDBG program to purchase and provide to an end user. That wasn't the thought process here, was it?
Typically, the CDBG program, the home ownership program we've implemented in the past, it does, you know, take CDBG funds to acquire a property, CDBG funds to renovate a property, and then it would be occupied or sold to a household of up to 80% median income.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause, and I don't know if, if the attempt here is to tie it to the conversation that we had related to the residential portion of the Invest Hagerstown program, but that wasn't my thought process in bringing that into the conversation. My thought process was to identify those places and work with the private lending institutions, real estate entities, and mortgage entities, so that we would identify them if there are things we can do at a city level to, to encourage and incentivize the private sector moving them from a vacated status to an owner occupied or a reoccupied status. That would be the direction. And I'm not certain if that's what the $66,000 is attempting to address, or whether it's attempting to address a completely different type of program.
I think traditionally, the home ownership program has just been in place to target vacant structures throughout the city. The structures that tend to sit, they just deteriorate, and it's almost a demolition-by-neglect type, type building. So this is basically an ongoing program that's been implemented-
Right.
... roughly about 20 years. And we just saw this as an opportunity to, maybe with the way prices are at this point, to continue the home ownership program. That $36,000 would probably be enough to acquire and even, you know, have some renovations completed. And the part-time inspector, it's with conversations with Neighborhood First Group, some of our homeowners like Mr. Smith, with Mr. Falk and the inspections Department with the strain that they're, they're getting from these. That's, that was the reasoning behind the recommendation.
Understood. I'm just trying to make sure that, that, I mean, I understand that program's ongoing. What I'm trying to make sure we're not doing is muddy the waters between the two, because I can, I envision that type of CDBG program to be different, frankly, than the, than an approach through the, you know, private sector of, you know, identifying these vacant homes within these traditionally, you know, more stable owner occupied neighborhoods and getting those back, you know, back into occupied hands. I just, I see them as two different goals, two different programs. I just don't think you're going to make the money, frankly, go far enough in that type of program that you are, you know, with the more urban units that, you know, that are of less cost, you know, to, to do and flip, I guess. I just think they're two completely separate issues. I mean, what you're going to be able to acquire a home, you know, on, on Locust that's been vacated, frankly, is markedly different than, than, you know, a vacated home on Oak Hill. It just, it's just the fact of the market. My, my hope was that we would go into some of these neighborhoods and that be a completely separate effort.
Right. And the flip side is, you're more than, more likely to flip and sell that house on Oak Hill than you are on Locust, right?
Completely, but I think you're, you're more, you're more likely also to, to be able to incentivize at a smaller cost level, the private sector to do that in, you know, in more marketable neighborhoods.
Kristin, can you tell us exactly what you're talking about this money being used to do?
Mm-hmm.
I, I mean, in a specific example?
Sure. Let, let's take the, the analysis that staff provided, that, you know, anywhere from 7% to 10% of, of housing stock in the city neighborhoods right now is vacant. So it isn't like there's, there's 50% in one single neighborhood, it's 7% to 10%, you know, depending on the neighborhood. Clearly, you are not going to be able to, to, as aggressively, go into your more urban core and find those locations and, and work with the private sector to put them back into the private, you know, occupied hands as, as cost-effectively as you would be in neighborhoods where the homes are frankly larger, on larger lots, have clearly been vacated, and, and the, the private market, if you could work with them to remove some of those smaller obstacles, could get that back.
But that's what I'm trying to get to, is, I understand the concept, but I don't understand the actuality. What do you use the money for? I mean, you're, you're not, from what I gather you're saying, you're not talking about buying the house on Oak Hill.
No.
What are you talking about doing with the money?
I think-
See, that's what I don't understand.
Sure. Well, I, I think that it is, I think that it is a unit, or, or house, or, or property, more property specific. I mean, I think that you go into a place and say, okay.
Let's do, let's do a real good example. The house next door to me is vacant. It is absolutely, generally has high weeds, hasn't been painted in years, the roof has moss growing on it, and it's, let's assume it's sitting maybe in bankruptcy, in the middle of an otherwise flourishing neighborhood.
Got certain liens against it.
Right. So what, what do we do with that type of specific example with the money?
I think those are the types of properties you can identify that you don't have to buy through some type of CDBG program to, to work with the mortgage entities and the real estate entities to get that property back on the market.
But how?
If you will. Well, I, again, I think, I think it's going to depend on the house, and it's going to depend on what circumstances, you know, a house may have, you know, certain liens against it, a house may have-
I mean, so would we pay the liens off? Would we?
I, I think we need to entertain that. I think we need to entertain those types of liens.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, that's what I'm trying to get to.
You know, if, if-
Would we do some refurbishing to make it more marketable?
Right. Maybe, maybe address some, some, some issues it may have with utility infrastructure, service line infrastructure, those types of things, where we're not, you know, buying that house at its marginal market rate of, you know, $150,000, but maybe there's a program whereby $10,000 would get that property back on the market, you know, back moving and, and back in private ownership without the city ever having to acquire it. I think that, I think that's markedly different than, than in the urban core, where, where frankly, we would have to look at a property and say, hey, you know, the, the thing's sitting there, it's been sitting there for three years, and you can, you can get it for, you can get it for $25,000 or $30,000, and, and it's going to cost that much to, to fix it up, you know what I mean? And, and get it back on the market. I just think they're two separate initiatives.
And I don't disagree with the next one. The next question becomes, given that we have, what, until next week, to get this plan in, is this, is this the type of thing that if we did the plan that you have right now and submitted it, in two months, could we make an amendment? Or would Kristin is talking about directly fit into what you're actually putting in? Is it broad enough to fit into that kind of thing?
I, I think what I envisioned was this inspector would be able to do those things across the gambit, because, you know, the inspector's going to review what they review, they're, they're going to see these things. What, what I don't want to get into is, or I didn't envision we would, we would utilize this CDBG-related money the same way we would use that other type of residential Invest Hagerstown money we were talking about.
Okay.
They would be two separate things, and that's why I wanted to make sure this wasn't taking the place of the initiative we were talking about last week.
No.
Okay.
This is basically-
That's what I was trying to figure out.
A revamp of the initial home ownership program.
And add a little more on, so you can go a little further.
Correct.
But the inspector would be able to do, have the ability to, to encompass sort of a review of, of both of those initiatives.
Yes.
Yeah. How does the housing rehab program that the city operates differ from what Habitat for Humanity is now doing, which instead of building new construction, they're actually rehabbing older houses, too? How does, how does, how is it similar, or how is it different?
I would have to probably talk to Sherri Cooper to get more detail on exactly how their program works.
I know that they purchased some homes that the city had purchased previously, but I don't know if it's, is it the same basic work, or maybe different parameters?
I would speculate that it is a similar program. I'm not sure if Habitat targets properties that are as dilapidated as the ones we may target. I guess it all depends on, you know, what their available funding is and, and how many clients they have on their wait list.
And they probably don't have the 80% of median income threshold either.
They may be a little bit lower, but I, I could, I could try to get that information from the-
I was just curious. I know that, I think it's great that they're doing rehabs now instead of all new construction.
Right. And they have purchased properties beyond the ones they've purchased from the city.
Right.
There's others. But they have a site criteria, and they, you know, look at various things that you would expect, and whether it was a good investment for them to make. But they are doing it in all kinds of city neighborhoods, and it's great. And that's a new departure, doing renovations.
Well, this looks good. Good work.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for staff on this?
Thank you.
I think we bring the chief to the table now. Saw Chief Holtzman come in, talk about proposed changes to bicycles and play vehicles ordinance. Welcome back, chief.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Good afternoon, chief. So you're bringing us a pro skateboard ordinance?
Yes. Well, maybe you should start by saying what precipitated this, this change.
Sure. We've been noticing, as many of the council members have noticed, a lot of the bicyclists riding recklessly around the city, riding up the streets the wrong way, that sort of thing. And there's a, a good city ordinance in place to enforce that throughout the city. And that ordinance, basically, it says in that ordinance that you can't ride recklessly, out of control, and be dangerous, or you're subject to a penalty under the city ordinance. So as we set out to enforce that, we also looked back over the ordinance that was in place for the prohibition area for the rioting downtown on the sidewalks and in the parking lots. And so we set out to enforce both of those. And in the course of doing that, in the majority of this, we're seeing it in the downtown, we're seeing it up on Mulberry Street, around the fairgrounds, the, the guys riding in the street the wrong way. When we went downtown, and our downtown enforcement officers began to strictly enforce again, and we do this once a year, every other year, we'll strictly enforce this bicycle ordinance. We, we came across our new business owners downtown, which are manufacturing our skateboards, the longboards, and they were shocked to realize that they located a business in, right in the heart of a prohibition area where they can't ride their, their longboard, even in a responsible manner on a sidewalk. They had to be stopped by the police officer and informed of this, of this ordinance that was in place. They were disappointed in that and, and reached out to me, and I think at least one of the council members about that. And so we took a look at the, I took a look at the ordinance and just challenged the idea, you know, again, can, can we enforce this through some discretion, is the point? Can we apply what we do already and what's effective with these, these kids riding recklessly on the streets? Can we just apply that same reckless behavior to the sidewalks and parking lots and thereby allow kids, children that want to ride in a parking lot? You know, this prohibition is four-block radius, basically, from the square 24 hours a day. So on a Saturday afternoon, if somebody wants to ride their bicycle on the central lot, they can't. Have to tell them no. If, if I'm going to strict- Have to tell them no if, if I'm going to strictly enforce it. Well, you would think, well, use your discretion. The point is there is no discretion in the law that's in place. And so what this does is this, this, what I'm proposing here is that we apply the same thing that we do on, all over the city streets to the sidewalks in general and the parking lots. The, the question is, you know, how do you adequately do that? How do you, how do you adequately say this is safe behavior and that's not safe behavior? If, if we have a Maryland theater event letting out and there's hundreds of people walking down the sidewalks, are the police going to let somebody ride their bicycle down there? The answer would be no. The police officer would use his discretion, say it's not safe right now to be riding your bicycle in this block, way too many people. So that would be one example. An easier example would be, again, back to this business owner who described very vividly to me, riding his, gently riding his longboard, skateboard down the sidewalk to go eat lunch downtown. Not a lot of people around. He's just describing the event to him and he gets stopped by the policeman. So this would allow him to pass through, pass by the policeman with a, with a, you know, wave good afternoon. But again, not, not permit him to ride dangerously at 15 miles an hour right next to the doors when the doors are opening and closing. Another example comes to mind is the police officers right now and have been for years riding our bicycles on the sidewalk. We're exempt from it. There was a lot of, and we haven't run anybody over. We can ride those bikes downtown and riding them for years and at times very fast if, if you need to. But it can be done, it can be done safely with common sense. And to the, to the kids that want to ride recklessly in the street, you're not going to do it on the sidewalks either. So the same law, same ordinance, same section of the ordinance would be applied to them. If a tourist wants to ride his bike downtown and hop up on the sidewalk because he has his funny shoes on and he can't walk in those things and needs to kind of glide his bicycle down to the visitor's center, I've seen this happen, police officer stops and talks to him. And they're wearing those funny shoes that you can't even walk because they clip into the, clip in. So it's those common sense principles. It's, it would not be, it, it would take some management on our part, some education on our part to the public. I did stop up even today and talked to Mike up at the bike shop and talked to him about this and asked him if he was involved in, in the origination of this ordinance. And he said he wasn't and, you know, he's been trying to educate his, his clientele who come up disappointed from time to time about being stopped. And he'll ask him, well, how were you riding? Well, we weren't riding dangerous. We're just riding this way or that way. And, you know, it's sort of like try not to draw attention to yourself. But he says, listen, when the police officers aren't downtown, those, those kids go right back to riding on the sidewalks and they don't want to ride and compete with the traffic in the streets. So I think this is a balance of having enough enforcement downtown to, to enforce this and then, and then just as a chance to revisit the four block prohibition of riding bicycles downtown and just apply what's, what's in place on the streets to the sidewalks and to the, into the parking lots. So that was a long introduction, but that's what brought me here and that's who I've, I've spoke to to get to this point, so.
I think what you propose makes a lot of sense to me.
What is the penalty for a violation?
It is a civil infraction and I'll have to look that up. This is where I turn to my counselor.
Does the?
It's at lea, it's a, it's a fine and, and they can have their, their bicycle confiscated from them.
And what is the appeal route for that?
Don't have any answer for you.
Well, it would be in district court. I mean, somebody could.
Somebody could take it to district court.
District court.
Thank you.
Does, does the redraft of this ordinance prohibit, because it doesn't include, does it specifically prohibit the mopeds that we see parked on the public sidewalks downtown?
They're going to fall under, they wouldn't fall under this. You couldn't ride your moped on the sidewalk.
I mean, we, I, I see them parked on the sidewalk all the time. I'm, I'm just curious, if we redraft this, does that mean the mopeds are going to?
Parked versus riding them?
Right. I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether or not this.
Could we, you want to extend it to the?
No, I don't.
Not extend it, no. To let them, let them pull up and park their bike there, moped?
Yeah, I just, I would envision that, that mopeds would park the way that other vehicles do and not on the public sidewalks. I mean, we see them from time to time parked on the sidewalk.
Yeah, you do. You do see them parked on the sidewalk. There's nothing in our city code that permits them to be parked on the, on the sidewalk. If they were just sort of falling into that, you know, it has pedals, treat it like a bicycle. If you're not, if you're not riding it, they, they chain it up someplace.
And that's why I bring up the question. Does that mean, does a moped fall under a play vehicle?
No, I think it.
No.
It's a motorized vehicle.
Yeah, it's a motorized vehicle. The current sections don't, don't address that.
I understand that, but right now what we do is we allow mopeds, I mean, they, they somehow get up onto the sidewalk. So, so by some act, you know what I mean, they're getting onto the sidewalk.
We can probably address that. I can look at our, our parking ordinance and, and specifically find something there that we can apply to that and, and get them off the sidewalks. I agree with you that, you know, the mopeds are getting bigger and bigger. They're like small motorcycles now.
And faster and faster, yeah.
Faster and faster. So to, to park up on the, up on the sidewalk for free versus, you know, in, in a spot, I agree with you. But you do see that sometimes people park them in front of their apartment building or something and chain them around the, a pole. But certainly I think that would fall into the parking ordinance and, and not so much this play vehicle concept here that I have.
Well, if we're going to expand, I just want to comment, much more dangerous than this are the Tiger Bikes and some of the others that I see weaving and, you know, violating a lot of different laws and I see it a lot, so, and I've never seen one pulled over. I'm not saying you don't, but I, I, I think that that's in, one of the most dangerous traffic hazards right now are the, the very fast bikes, you know, motorbikes.
Absolutely. The, both of the.
And they're weaving, I've seen on the highway, all over the place.
That's a problem every city's having. There was even a piece that was running in Baltimore, in the Baltimore news about that. They're seeing the same thing that, you're talking about the, the motorized dirt bikes and, and the pedal bikes, but they're, they're riding up the street the wrong way.
No, I'm talking about motorcycles, Tiger Bikes and things like that, very powerful motorcycles.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we do see that a bit. We do, we do try to stop them that will run on you. And so we're, we are enforcing those as best we can. We have been out a couple of times and adequately enforced the, the other description I gave you with the kids on the bicycles going the wrong way.
Right.
We, we stopped a group down in Locust Point. Officer Mullino actually grabbed one down there and then Officer McCash grabbed a kid. I think one of the two stories ended up in an arrest just because they, they were disorderly conduct along with it. So we're, we are trying to go after and send specific patrols out for that. And we do get calls up in the north end about, I'll say Mulberry Avenue, Fairground Avenue, all the way up to Cortland Manor, up around the, the New Lowe's up there. They're riding those dirt bikes that you're talking about all through that, that area.
Is doing a wheelie considered dangerous or unsafe or does it fall into that?
Well, on a motorcycle, yes.
Well, on a bicycle.
On a bicycle.
See these kids doing, riding up Locust Street doing wheelies?
Right.
Maybe even coming the wrong way.
Yes.
Yes. Coming the wrong way is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
If a kid wants to try to do a wheelie, you know, I'm not, I'm not.
They're not trying, they're doing it.
I'm not against that. The ones that are going the wrong way, riding the wheelie up the street and, and daring the traffic, that's the reckless behavior we're talking about, so.
Chief, I, I want to commend you. This is the second thing you brought to our attention where you're requesting common sense. And I think that's really positive for our citizens and for the police officers who now have the right to use their common sense. And you're right to bring in a manufacturer of a skateboard right into a place where they're not allowed to skateboard. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And this does make a whole lot of sense and I just want to commend you for it.
Thank you.
Well, it'd been nice to see that skateboard park go over to Fairgrounds like it was supposed to. Not saying that everybody would be there, but the majority would be. And the bicycles are out of control. So are the mopeds, all of it is. But then again, we don't have enough police officers to try to combat all of this. That was a plug for the police department.
Thank you. You always do. I appreciate it.
I know. Either that or short of me using razor wire. That's next. And I'm a councilperson who said that.
What, are you going to use razor wire?
We'll try to keep, we'll try to keep it from getting to that point.
Which road? Your road?
Just come and see.
All right.
Could be anywhere.
In, in talking to Mike up at the bike shop today, he, he said that he'd be willing to help us get out and educate some of the riders in our downtown and, and educate his clientele that are coming in. He, he touches a lot of people that ride those bikes. So he said he would, he would help get the word out, whatever was discussed here tonight. I told him we'd be discussing the work session and I'd.
I don't think the majority would be the ones that he sells to.
Well, this is also.
You know, I mean, it would be a good learning, but believe me, with what we have in our end.
This is also a, something Bicycle Advisory Committee is working with, with the police on too. And, and we're trying our best to do it in two ways. I don't know when we'll be able to do this, but we would love to start being able to spot police, for instance, with helmets, bicycle helmets. So instead of just being an enforcement tool, maybe not only could they, in the process of enforcing, but give out free helmets. But that, you know, that wouldn't be from taxpayers' dollars, but from grants that we're looking to. But we're trying to come up with some constructive ways to, to deal with this. Because, yeah, it's very frustrating for us to see these bicyclists riding the wrong way down a bicycle lane. If you think it's dangerous for the cars, what you see, if you're a responsible biker and you're riding the right way on a bicycle lane, to have somebody coming in the wrong direction at you with traffic is where accidents are going to occur. And it's more than likely not going to be the people in the car that are severely injured.
Speaking of bicycle lanes, and since the bicycle lanes were thought through, we see more and more, I know I do, of vehicles that have parking on the other side of the street and they are the ones who park in the bicycle lane.
That's true.
Flashing lights.
A lot.
Just a thought.
All right. Any other feedback on the ordinance under consideration today?
No. The only other feedback though is one with the disgusts, candidly pennies, right? I mean, all these discussions, same with discussions we've had about people coming and taking out of the recyclables. We have only so many police and people have to be aware that if we're not willing to do something about that issue, there's a lot of complaints that people are going to have about things like this. It's, it's, it's the same thing with the weeds and the dirt and other things. We either have to supply our, our people with manpower to take care of them or we're going to have to also understand that some of these things aren't going to be taken care of.
And I want to clarify that I have nothing against motorcycles. I like open air motoring. I like motorcycles. I enjoy them. I just don't like people going twice as fast as the prevailing traffic and making their own lanes and weaving. And I, you know, that's far more dangerous, I think, than, you know, huge danger that's out there right now, so.
The more, majority of them are unlicensed. They don't have tags on them.
Well, I'm talking about regular vehicles on the highway. There's a lot of that too.
Okay. So everybody's okay with this being on the agenda for next, next week for the introduction of the ordinance?
By the way, Mark, the, the bikes are hiding over at Pangborn and at the Fairground, the dirt bikes. Since you've done the patrol, now they've quieted, but that's where they're at. They wait to sneak onto the road.
The next item we'll keep the chief up here for is the MOU with HCC for the Police Academy.
Sure. This memorandum of understandings between the City of Hagerstown and the Hagerstown Community College. And it, it sort of outlines our partnership to support them in their management creation and management of the, the Hagerstown Community College Police Academy. For about 28, 29 years, the Hagerstown Police Department ran the Western Maryland Police Academy. We abandoned that several years ago for economic reasons. And Chief Smith partnered for several years with the community college. So he gets the credit for this one, to come up with this business model. This, this MOU outlines a lot of those discussions that the chief, Smith and myself have had with the leadership at the college. The college, they're going to manage the program. They have staff to manage it. They have a director and they have a full-time staff assistant to it. But they don't have the expertise to teach all the classes. So the Hagerstown Police Department and the Sheriff's Department are teaching the lion's share of that. And the Hagerstown Police Department is teaching a large portion of that. 1,700 hours is what's listed in the MOU. It sounds like a, a big, big hurdle to reach, but that doesn't take very long. I think what the council would be interested in to know is that it's not all overtime for us. Some of it is overtime for us, but we try to manage it with the on-duty staff that we have. Some of the, some of the instructors come, they'll get reassigned from patrol to go out there and teach. So we are tracking this first class with it. I don't have a number for you to, to know what the overtime number is. I know Sergeant Murray, I've asked him to keep a close eye on the amount of overtime. But what we're doing is we're keeping track of every hour we're out there. And for every hour, we're, they're going to give us a credit of $10 an hour, whether it's on duty or off duty. And that goes into a bank to you, to be used as a, basically a scholarship fund for our students. It costs roughly $5,000 to send a student through there. We have seven students in the academy right now, so it adds up pretty quick. So this $17,000 at a, at a minimum would be, or I'm sorry, at a maximum would be, would be the number that we would be able to deduct, deduct from that each class. They're going to run two classes a year and I believe that we can fulfill the commitment of teaching out there. I believe that we'll, in, in the future, as, as Ms. Nye says, as we get some more staff on hand, we'll be able to send more officers out on regular duty instead of overtime. Gives the officers a nice break. They can teach the expertise that they like to teach. It's, it is a nice break from patrol. I think a teaching department is sort of like a teaching hospital. You do stay on the cutting edge. You have to do your research, you do your homework and find out what, what your specific expertise is because you're going to teach it. And those students will challenge you. So you better know what you're talking about when you get there. And I think it, that transmits when these, the officers are teaching in service for our own officers and in court. So it's a good program for us. That's, that's the outline of that. Any, any questions for council, I can ask?
I'm reading the budget, the budget impact is something you can absorb within your current budget?
Yes. Yes. Again, it is costing us some overtime, but we're tracking the overtime. The old academy cost us overtime as well, but we also had staff assigned to it. So now we just have some overtime assigned to it. And I can report back to the council, you know, at the end of this first class, kind of give you some hard numbers. This is where exactly how much our overtime costs were and this is, this is what our benefit was. We can take a look at it.
Have a good day today. Have any questions or other discussion on this? This is also on our agenda for next week's approval.
Is this a required course or how, how does that work for a new recruit?
Yeah.
Or will be a required course?
Yes. All, all, these are for entry-level police officers. So every, every person seeking to become a policeman has to go through a basic academy. This academy meets the Maryland Police Training Commission standards and all of our instructors are Maryland Police Training certified. It's 26 weeks long, this academy. They started in March. They graduate September 13th, I believe, this year, their, their very first class. And they have 19 students out there.
Okay. So this is basic?
This is basic. This is basic training for the police.
Then they get a JT and advanced.
Four months of field training after this, yes. 10-month process.
All right. Thanks. And you get one more. You got a firearms ordinance you'd like to have.
Firearms. And this one I might need Mr. Narin to wrangle a little bit. We, what precipitated this? We, we received notice that some of our, that our, our city code is preempted by state code and, and it's just one of those things that along the way needs updated. Maryland, Maryland law supersedes any local law. So in dealing with firearms, we, it, the old ordinance for firearms lumped firearm, or weapons, lumped firearms and weapons together. And this splits them apart. So the first off is that anything dealing with firearms, which are the, the handguns, the rifles and shotguns, the firearms are covered under Maryland law. So they're, they're, they're lifted out separately. The weapons that are left behind are your BB guns, your slingshots, your pellet guns, bow and arrow, things like that. I would say bow and arrow, I'm not sure. So those, those weapons are broken separately. Now, none of the weapons can be fired in the city limits. So that's an important thing to remember. That hasn't changed. You still can't discharge a firearm. You still can't shoot your, the, the BB gun, that sort of thing. That hasn't changed, you still can't discharge a firearm, you still can't shoot your, the BB gun, that sort of thing. So in separating them, it meets the Maryland standard. And then while we were at it, we looked at the Maryland law and to see what the Maryland law would allow. The first thing, I've had some officers and supervisors bring sort of a gap that was in the local city ordinance before, and it actually permitted you to carry, openly carry, a rifle or a BB pellet, not a firearm, but one of those type of weapons, you could just walk on the street with it. We would stop somebody and they would say, well, I'm on my way to go hunting. And, you know, they figured out the loophole, it says right in there. So we stopped, an example is we stopped in the middle of the afternoon, someone walking past Winter Street Elementary School. Well, you carry a firearm near a school and you're going to meet the police, all right? And that's what happened. We ran up there, we contacted him and ordered him to put his firearm down. It turned out to be a pellet gun. He tells me he's just carrying the thing to go hunting, some squirrels or something. It was in the afternoon, no reason to believe otherwise, so, and you can only hunt out in the county, you can't hunt in the city. Almost as if they've been educated and reading the law. So what I've asked here to do in this ordinance is require those weapons to be carried in case. You can carry them, just put them in a lock case, and it kind of removes the danger that we get called out for. So if somebody wants to walk down the street and go put something in their car, you know, just put it in a case, keep it out of view, and you won't have the nine-one-one call that comes in, because there's so many schools in the city, and you see somebody carrying a weapon, everybody's sensitive to that. Carry it, just put it in a case. So that's what this talks about.
So this doesn't apply to individuals with concealed carry permits?
No. The last one does, and in reviewing the Maryland law, do you have the, I don't know if you have the statute with you. There's a section in Maryland law that does permit municipalities to prohibit firearms from certain places of public assembly. And this is where the council can have some discussion here, and you might need to think about this one. So I'll just introduce the idea to you. I liken this to think about going to a museum, and you go to walk in the front door of the museum, and you see the sign there that says, no weapons, you can't bring your firearms in here, okay? We've been to the National Mall, places like that, you can't bring it in. And so this law would permit that. However, you'd have to conspicuously mark it. So if for some time now or in the future, the council decided to make, you know, even City Hall prohibited from bringing your firearms in, and that would apply to concealed carry permits, not law enforcement, then we would have to put the sign out there, and then it would take effect immediately. You don't have that right now to do that. So the law's in place, it's in Maryland law, municipalities have that right to exercise that. And Mr. Narin, I felt it was important to bring that to your attention, to let you know what your options are when it comes to firearms in places of public assembly. You could extend that, in theory, to a public event, and I would say perhaps maybe something like the Blues Fest, where it's all gated off, it's closed. Not the parade, not the parade, it's just too open and long, there's no way to police that. But a simple event where you have it gated off and you have a lot of people in a small area, again, you could put the sign out there, we could give everybody notice that that's another area, we don't want you to bring your firearms into that area when that's going on. Again, it's an option for you, you don't have it now, it's something to think about in how we apply that. You can do, you can extend that up to a hundred yards away from the building or the event, or you could take the hundred yards off, and you could just make it at the door, and it stops right there.
Well, a place of public assembly seems pretty, is a broad thing. What would all, would that include? I mean, that seems to be beyond government or public buildings when it says public assembly.
Unfortunately, that's the law and the, that's the wording in the state statute that allows.
That allows this.
That allows this, and we wanted to try to be consistent with that.
I think it's good to be consistent, I was just, so I think it's something that.
In order to frame that public assembly, we could perhaps come up with a definition of what we deem to be a public assembly in the city. We could work on some language to try to box that into a smaller area on what we feel a public assembly is for us. And we could give that a try.
I think I'd rather leave it broad, and that gives this council or future councils discretion, you know.
I have some questions. Is this the proposed ordinance? Is this the proposed change?
Yes.
No, I don't think you have that updated copy. Yes, you do.
Okay, let's go through this, if we can. Why do we even talk about handguns in this ordinance in Section B? And why do we say rifles or shotguns are regulated by the state, which they're not, unless I'm missing something?
Well, they're firearms.
Right, but the only preemption that I understand, unless I'm misunderstanding it, I thought the preemption was for regulated firearms.
There is, but there's an exception that allows municipalities to regulate the discharging of the handgun as opposed to possession.
No, but what I'm saying, where is it in the state law that preempts us from being able to regulate rifles or shotguns? Here it says rifles or shotguns are regulated by the state. As far as possession, I don't see where that is. I see where the state has preempted us from passing regulations as it relates to regulated firearms. But that wouldn't be a shotgun, and that wouldn't be a rifle unless it was one of the specified assault weapons. As I understand the statute reading it. The other thing I have a question about, and, because, you know, these things affect people, and they're meaningful to people, whether we ever think somebody would enforce this or not. But under this law, I mean, as I understand it, someone who shot an intruder in their home has committed a crime. And I don't think anybody intends it to be a criminal act to discharge your firearm in your house to defend your family, or to discharge a firearm most anywhere, whether it's in your house or if you have a permit to carry, and you legally otherwise would be discharging your firearm. And we know that there are certain circumstances which anybody would have the legal right to discharge a firearm, but for the prohibition, a blanket prohibition which makes it illegal. And I think if we're going to now rewrite a statute, that we should not make it illegal to do something that no citizen in this community thinks should be illegal. And that's the legitimate use of a firearm for protection of life. And I think that should be in here. I have problems with making it unlawful to possess. Okay, again, in B, we've excluded rifles or shotguns, because we're saying they're regulated by the state. So to possess or transport any weapon listed in Section A, except for handguns, rifles, or shotguns, within the city limits unless unloaded and in an enclosed carrying case, guess what? It seems to me what you're doing is making it totally legal to possess a rifle or shotgun in the streets of Hagerstown, because I don't know anything in the state law that prohibits carrying a weapon in the streets. Is there a shotgun?
To carry it in a case?
Well, you're requiring, you want it, is there any state law that requires a rifle or a shotgun?
To be. I think your answer is no to that.
Okay, see, so I have concerns. And then we're making, we're making it unlawful to possess, as I understand it, we're making it unlawful to possess a BB gun in your house unless it's unloaded in an enclosed carrying case.
Clarify that to be on the public streets, sidewalks.
Okay, but it doesn't say that, okay? All right, so if we could do that.
Which section are you talking?
And take a look then again at the shotgun and rifles.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm afraid what you're doing, yeah, because what you're doing here, unless you're going to show us somewhere that rifles or shotguns are regulated by the state preemptively, you may be creating a loophole, so that you're allowing rifles. And I'm not sure, I'm not a pro at this. I was just trying to browse through the state statute before we got involved with this. And I see the regulated firearm, so we have no question, a regulated firearm is a handgun or any of these assault weapons that are listed ad nauseam.
All weapons are assault weapons.
Well, a shotgun isn't.
I understand how the state defines.
Well, I understand that, I mean, that's a whole different discussion. But my whole concern is making sure we have the preemption correct. And there is no question that we are preempted to do anything as it related to regulated firearms. You can't possess them, you can't, we can't make any laws about that, about possessing regulated firearms.
But that brought up something, a question I had, because I see handguns, rifles, or shotguns, and I thought of assault, automatic weapons, and so forth. It's kind of a different category.
But they're regulated firearms, it's more preempted from.
I understand that, but we don't mention it one way or another, we do mention handguns, you know.
So you specifically want to know what in state law, if anything, prohibits us from regulating the carrying, the open carrying of a shotgun or a rifle and not requiring that to be in a case?
Right, because if there.
Same as the BB guns?
Yeah, if there's nothing in the state law, yeah, I'm just concerned.
As well, just to make sure they're in a case?
I want to make sure that we're accomplishing what you're setting out to accomplish.
Right.
And my big fear as I read this statute, and I may be wrong, but my big fear, if I'm correct in reading this statute, is what you've done in B is exempted out three things, handguns, rifles, or shotguns, okay? Which are regulated by the state. I know the handguns are a regulated firearm, so we can't even discuss them in the local statute. But rifles, unless they're assault weapons, and shotguns are not regulated firearms. And unless there's something else in the state statute, and there may very well be, chief, that says you can't carry a rifle or a shotgun on the open street. If there isn't, then what you've done is taken exactly what you're trying to prevent and make it legal, specifically exempting rifles and shotguns and saying you can carry them.
Well, I'm not aware of any state statutes requiring a rifle or a shotgun to be in a case. I mean, think about getting out of your car and walking out in the woods and going home.
I'm not either, and that's why I'm very, very.
But in the city limits, the idea is to stop the nine-one-one calls coming in.
I don't.
So we'll take a look at that and see if we can.
Oh, I don't disagree with your intent, I'm just afraid this may be the opposite.
Should we say except for handguns and assault weapons, if there's a long list of assault weapons?
I do not want, I do not know why we would write.
And why would we put that in?
I don't know why we would refer to Section A and Section B.
Yeah.
Because I think we should make clear, this is very, you know, to possess or transport any weapon unless it's listed in Section A, except for, why don't we just talk about the things that we're trying to regulate? That's what I think we ought to do. So it should say to possess or transport, if you want to make it, you know, airgun, blowgun, spring gun, gun op, all those things, that's fine, but if we're not allowed to say it's illegal to possess a regulated firearm, let's make B a standalone section that's clear, and obviously talk about being in the public areas.
So if I park my car four neighbors down, where we're going on a trip together, and I have the permission to walk across the front yards of my three neighbors next to them, it's cool for me to go ahead and have the firearm outside of a carrying case and walk it down to the car four neighbors down?
In the county?
No, 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 in the city, because you just said something about streets, you're only going to make it apply to the public street.
To public areas.
No, no. You said that.
Well, where do I?
You said that what you want to add to B is after, within the city, you want that to refer to the city streets unless unloaded and in an enclosed carrying case.
We could extend that, streets, alleys, sidewalks.
Well, first.
I know, but then you're infringing on somebody's private property.
There's a whole nother discussion to be had.
And I'm not in favor of any of this, so I'm just playing devil's advocate.
First of all, there's a whole nother discussion. The first discussion was making sure that we get the statute written to reflect what you're trying to do. And then the second thing I think we need to do is discuss whether we want to do what you're seeking. And I'm not saying that I have difficulty with that, just the way this is written now. And the same thing, I mean, I think if what you're really trying to achieve is keeping people from walking down the street with firearms, that's really what we should say. Because otherwise, what we're doing is saying you can't transport a slingshot. I just, you can't possess a slingshot in the city. So I just think we need to make sure that it's well-defined and says, and I understand your intent. I have no problem with that intent of making sure, I agree with you. I don't want to see people around our schools or in our downtown with BB guns that look like assault rifles or BB guns that look like handguns, and it does not look like a BB gun is covered, although a starter rifle pistol is, is a handgun.
It puts our officers in a really tight spot.
Gets people ready to be shot, no.
Because you see, you know, five, six officers engage somebody like that and take and order them down, it just disrupts that whole area for a while, and it's not safe to do that.
I have, I have.
Let alone you're the poor person walking down the street carrying that.
No difficulty with what your intent is, and I want to just make sure that B does what you want instead of the opposite. And I'm afraid right now, the way it's written, it does the exact opposite.
Yeah, we'll work this one back up with some of those areas in mind.
It's a part of your basic, or maybe advanced training, seriously, the correct citation. State, city code on these various.
Of which to apply?
Yeah, which to apply, that'll.
Well, you always apply state code if it applies, and if not, then what we're talking about, a lot of this just falls right below that.
I understand, but if it was previously in the city code, I guess that could have been cited, right? Now it's got to be the state code, or it's not valid.
Pertaining to firearms, yes.
Pertaining to firearms, yeah. Well, certain firearms, certain firearms, just certain firearms.
We are permitted as municipality to not have discharge of weapons. So the other areas we're looking at is the actual carrying it in a case is the main discussion.
Are they going to say, because the state, are people going to try to say, because the state regulates firearms and chooses not to regulate rifles and shotguns, then that we can't? Is people going to make that argument? Well, so much of the Second Amendment foundation will try to make that argument.
I think they do regulate, I can tell you right now, you can't transport weapons in this state in a vehicle loaded, I think, for example. There's, I know you can't, I mean, I've represented people who charge with the illegal transportation of weapons that are not unloaded with the ammunition in one location. So transportation of weapons is certainly controlled by state law, I just have to find it. And so this whole thing may be resolved by that, but.
All right, we'll do some more work on this one, we can set it back in for another work session, or we'll take whatever guidance you like on that.
Chief, this is a larger issue than we're used to being brought before city council. I think not only do you need to do more work on this one, but I think the city council, the mayor, should plan on having a public hearing on the product and let the citizens talk about this. I can't for the life of me understand why my neighbor, who's an avid hunter, is a criminal, or should be made a criminal, or should be, have to do anything if he wants to carry his weapons to his automobile to get to the hunting ground. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, and a common sense compromise to that would be, let's take a look at our schools. You know, if your neighbor live right across the street from. Exactly, you don't live across the street from a school, so perhaps we include some language about, within an area around the school, because that's where we get the majority of our calls. That's where our neighbors, we're asking them to pay attention, we're asking them to look for things that are out of the ordinary. And when they see somebody, two o'clock in the afternoon, walk up in the front of Bestra Elementary School or Winter Street Elementary with a rifle, they call the police. But, yeah, certainly we don't want that saying, that phone call wouldn't even come in in an area that, where there aren't kids. And it does look like somebody just walked into their car with something, so. So I think we can come up with something that would fit the need without making it blanket.
I thought most hunters did have cases for their guns. My family does. So what's the big, you know, carrying a weapon without the case? I can see it not being right.
So we'll do some more work on this and bring it back in a future work session. Is that the consensus at this point?
And I just want to clarify, the concealed, if you have a concealed carry permit, which is given by the state, correct? These provisions would not apply?
Would not apply.
I thought you said C would apply.
Unless, unless we do the public assembly.
Right.
Right.
In prohibited areas, yes, that could apply.
I mean, people with permits aren't going to be carrying a gun in the circuit court, I can tell you that.
Right.
Right.
Is there support on the council for a provision C? I'm just curious to get everyone's, to limit or prohibit weapons in city hall, for instance?
It doesn't prohibit it, it gives you the option of prohibiting it.
Gives you the option, you have to post it.
It doesn't automatically prohibit it.
Right, it's just certain functions, if you want.
You can do it for a certain time, you can do it permanently, but you have to enact for that particular property.
And you're okay with that?
So if you pass, I'm okay with that, yeah.
It might be helpful, the provision of state law that addresses this, it says within a hundred yards of or in a park, school, church, public building, or other place of public assembly. So I don't know if we want to.
So who has to enact it? I mean, you're saying, you're saying they have to enact it, who's they?
No, they don't have to. It says a county municipal corporation may regulate.
I hear what you're reading, I'm trying to figure out, may, we went from may to we are. So if we are the entity doing it, does that mean that the church has the right to post those signs? Or the county buildings, or some other, you know, entity that would fall into that public definition?
If you read that, and we'll bring this back, but if you read it, it says we have a right, or we have the ability to list all those things, and the last one, or other place of public assembly, I think we could take the word public assembly and define that as a body.
But somebody has to post it. I'm trying to figure out who's the entity that posts it, and does that mean only those entities that decide to post it are the entities that it applies to?
Well, the posting, the posting language is not in the state law.
But it's in this ordinance.
But in our discussion, we thought, well, how are people going to know if there isn't some sort of?
And I'm asking who's going to be the entity posting it?
Or authorizing it to be posted.
Or authorizing it to be posted. Well, if it's applying to churches, clearly, they're going to want to have that conversation, and they're going to want to make a determination whether they want to post it.
Yeah, that's not the intent here. This intent was to replace the public assembly, which is why, that's why I think we need to, we need to define what we believe is public assembly, and then work that out and make sure that fits the rules here. And just limit it to what this body wants, which might be this building, it might be an event that we have, and not every church and every place of public assembly in the whole city.
Or not individuals with a properly authorized concealed carry permits.
Well, that's already an exception in the law, I don't think we can.
Yeah, that's the only thing we're talking about, though.
I thought we just said C isn't.
You can't carry a handgun.
I thought you just said C doesn't.
It would.
Or does apply.
Yes, it applies to people with concealed permits.
I'm saying, I'm saying change the language to make that part exempt, or those individuals exempt.
Well, that's the only reason it's in there, is because, because of concealed permits. People do not have a right to carry handguns, concealed handguns without a permit.
Well, I mean, if they're on their property that happens to be within a hundred yards of that public assembly, they're on their property.
You do not have the right, if you do not have a permit to carry a concealed weapon, you do not have a right in this state to stand in your front yard with a concealed weapon.
That is.
It's a crime.
That is fully disassembled.
Then it may not be a weapon if it's fully disassembled.
But I think that begs that question then.
But I mean, state criminal law makes it clear that if you have a concealed handgun, it's unless you got a permit to carry it concealed, it's going to be a crime.
So you're carrying it to your car, you happen to live next to a school, and for that instance, you're following a law that allows you to do something that is now against
Oh, no, the state, the state has specific law here.
On how you transport.
Wearing, carrying or transporting, whether concealed or open.
So I have, I have this concealed carry permit. I live next to Pangborn Elementary. I am going to my job for that day, and, and, and in doing so, now fall within the parameters of what's being proposed in C.
Well, I don't think that C is, you know.
Because it applies to concealed carry permit holders.
My understanding is C would give us the authority to pass legislation that would not allow certain things. We wouldn't have to, listen, I don't agree with making it illegal to have a, if I were going to say I didn't want a handgun in city hall, I wouldn't say it was illegal to have a handgun within a hundred yards of city hall if you had a concealed permit. So, you know, Kristin, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I don't want to criminalize a concealed permit. I want to make specific places where a concealed permit doesn't work, and I have to think that's essentially buildings. I don't, I don't know how you tell somebody that they can't come within a hundred yards, because you're right. If you drive by Pangborn Elementary, you're technically, if you're going to make it within a hundred yards of the school, that wouldn't be my intent, but I would have no problem at all saying you can't carry a weapon into our public schools in the city of Hagerstown, even if you have a concealed permit.
Yeah, that, I did mention that hundred yards. I'm not sure that fits well within, you know, the makeup of our city, just because of that, exactly what you're describing, Mr. Alshar. If you do live near that school, I would say we could, these are all options. This is what the law allows you to do, and you can carve it down as small as we want. We drop the hundred yards, and you make it at the front door or at the gate to go into the public event, or public assembly. I think we need to define what public assembly is. I think we need to find what buildings we're talking about, and not do the hundred yards within it. Just you walk up, you see the sign, you take your gun back and secure it.
Well, if this body had, if there needed to be a zone around something, you could establish that. Could be fifteen feet, could be a hundred feet. But it wouldn't have to be anything.
That's correct.
That's the kind of language we need, that, you know, we could do it if we needed to do it, you know.
So you take it back to your vehicle and you secure it, I understand that. But I think that then begs the question of what possessed means. Does possessed mean on your person? Does it mean it's within your possession, i.e. within the ownership of the vehicle that you own? And those are all types of questions I would want to have answered before we would head down the road, as Councilman Munson points out, you know, sort of criminalizing individuals that are, you know, otherwise following the law. Are there any other questions or comments for the chief and our legal counsel on the specifics of what's being proposed so that they can prepare for when they come back, in addition to what we've already discussed? All right. Do you guys?
Back to another work session.
Yeah, I have good notes here, some of our main points, and we'll work them up from there.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
That brings us to item six on our agenda in Best Hagerstown First Third Program.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We simply wanted to be here tonight, the material you have in front of you is, represents nothing new, but we wanted to be here tonight to address any concerns that the mayor and council might have, so that we can prepare a motion sheet for next week.
And based on your discussion last Tuesday at the work session, what we were gearing up for is that you would approve of next Tuesday's regular meeting, the $1.2 million commercial side of this program? Based on the discussion you had last weekend, I guess earlier in May. So staff.
I guess this is one where it's really an experiment, and you guys, if things aren't working, I think you need to get back with us, or, you know, whatever. If you see something that might work better, because, you know, how property owners, developers, and just react to this is really critical. So I think we need to, you know, work on this as we go along.
Right, well, clearly the program's structured on an approach of a public-private partnership with developers, with the mayor and council dedicating resources as grants to partner with them, matching grants. So you're right, well, this is a bit of an experiment. We've done some of this on a smaller scale, but if, as we learn from this and as we gain experience, we'll certainly be coming back. A reminder that the mayor and council would approve the larger grant applications, so you'll be seeing those, and you'll be getting some direct knowledge and experience of the applications from that. Okay.
Just remind me again how, how many years we're holding them to the agreements that to get the one-third? Are we setting a time?
We're not on the one, on these, on these, on the one-thirds, we're not. We have discussed it on the residential side, but we've gone back to the drawing board on, for that program. But for this one, it's, the impact being created is the renovation of the property, no matter who, no matter who owns it and for how long, frankly.
Okay, well, we really have to watch this.
Yeah, yeah, well, and you'll be a integral part of the process.
And I know that from discussions with staff and also with developers, this is, so far, had a pretty positive reception in the development community. This is something that they could definitely work with, would help them with financing and to make a project viable, so.
It's got some excitement generated around it, for sure.
I'm aware that, we are aware that you contacted the development community, talked to them about this. But since this has been making the news, have you had any unexpected telephone calls the other way, saying, you didn't contact me, but I have an interest in this?
Not so far, my, the, no, not so far, but, but wouldn't be surprised. It is all happening fairly quickly, so I do expect to be fielding a lot of questions about this.
Okay, well, I would expect them to come too. All right. A dollar has, a dollar has a big constituency.
Any other questions for staff while they're here on this program?
We'll prepare the motion for next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That brings us to the item number seven, MML Double Taxation Work Group. Mr. Brubaker is a leader statewide with Maryland Municipal League, and has been working diligently on this issue and many other issues, so I'm going to turn it over to him at this time.
Well, thank you, Dave, but just one of a group of people that worked hard on this issue, and a larger group that worked hard on the legislative issues. This is, you know, as we all know, an issue of conflict, not just here, but all over the state, between municipalities and counties, and whether there's a fair reimbursement and/or tax offset. Two counties, in some cases, there isn't one at all, for services that the municipalities provide. The last legislation passed was in, the late, last significant legislation was in the late 1990s. It provided the, it may shell legislation, which again, most of you have heard of, and it, but it essentially did not require anything. It just required counties to negotiate with the municipalities under certain circumstances, especially under the shell counties. But it didn't require any particular formula or any particular reimbursement. It's been a hard issue at MML, it hasn't, it's been broached by various people, but it hasn't really gone forward since then, partly because there's so many variations around the state. Some municipalities are actually, think they have a reasonable deal, and we're afraid of perhaps losing that. Some counties do rebates like they used to do here, and some get tax offset where there's a lower tax, county tax rate within the municipality. After looking at all the somewhat complicated things and reports from some counties that were that thick, we decided on the very simplest legislation and where we think it's working best. And right, the legislation that we decided to recommend to the rest of MML is on page eight. And it gets rid of all the surrounding legislation, it repeals it, and all the may shell goes away, and there's one simple paragraph. The governing body of a county may not, may not impose a county property tax on property of a property owner, of a municipal corporation, for any service that the municipal, any service that the municipal corporation provides for the property owner. That language was modified a little bit to make it more specifically applicable. Right now, only applies to Anarundel and Howard County. I'm sure there's some history of that, but I'm not sure what that is. Howard County has no municipalities, oddly enough, but Annapolis does very well in their application of these, of this language. Right now, their tax offset is approximately 37 cents. I'm saying that we'll do that well, or that others will, but, you know, they certainly have succeeded at it. And rather than try to write a formula that applied to all 24 counties, we thought this language was simple. Now, one of the problems is it requires a tax offset. That's the system we're in right now, but some counties provide a rebate. But, you know, that system isn't working as well, because the counties just arbitrarily, no matter what the formulas are, some of the counties are just putting a ceiling on the rebates regardless. So, so we think that maybe this will work, and that it would make it much easier for a municipality to provide a tax rate for those services it does render behind this. So I haven't applied it to Washington County, and I think whether the formula used in Anarundel County with Annapolis can get applied by others in their counties remains to be seen. But that certainly is a model that's working very well right now. I think that it winds up with the residents, or the property taxpayers of Annapolis only paying 27 cents more than the unincorporated area outside of that, when you combine the two rates. So it works, it has worked. So the, we will be providing a forum, a briefing on that at MML at the upcoming conference. We hope to initiate discussions. There's already a number of people have presented it, like I'm doing, around, and we hope to, if we can get a consensus then, to make it a major initiative next legislative session. Again, we've talked, we've talked quietly to some legislators, and we've gotten opinion from the attorney general that, yes, indeed, that language could be made to apply statewide.
How do we go about figuring the value of those services that we offer that are double taxed, for instance?
Well, you know, it basically, you look at what we provide, and, you know, and you look at what the county provides, and that's all in the budget, really. Those are all items that are in the budget, and that's how they get to the, the county gets to its current amount. But the county, you know, we're, Annapolis is a full-service city like us. They have a paid professional fire department. So there's only five of us that are, you know, full-service cities. And essentially, they work through a formula using numbers that are in their budgets, their public numbers, so.
This is based on actual expenditures for those services?
Yeah. Well, it's based on expenditures, and if we provide that service, whether it's parks or paving the roads, or administrative services, that all gets credited when you calculate the offset. So, you know, and probably you can certainly argue about those values. So, you know, and probably you can certainly argue about those values, but the numbers are there to do it. And there is an established formula, which is the one they use in Anarundel County. So that, that would be, and I think it would give us a lot more latitude if, if it results in a favorable, a more favorable offset for us. I also wanted to mention that the Legislative Committee, of which the Double Taxation Work Group was a part, I just wanted to, real quick, you know, give some idea of MML and where it's really, I think, most effective, and that was during the legislative session and prior to that, getting ready for it. You know, we considered well over 100 draft bills, and we took positions on 45 draft bills. We met 10 times. We had Governor O'Malley in, we had Lieutenant Governor Brown, we had Secretary Hall from Planning, we had Secretary, Acting Secretary Mobley from DOT, we had Maggie McIntosh, who's, seems like a lot of bills that we're interested in goes through her committee and things like that, so, and some others. But, and we had give and take with all those, even with the governor, we had give and take, pretty good, pretty strong give and take. So it was a good group. We took positions on 45 bills. All the bills we opposed, none of them passed. Of the bills that we supported, 14 out of 33 passed, which for the General Assembly is the high batting average. The major initiative, highway user revenues, we did get restoration of 50% of the municipal funding, but it's only, you know, we didn't get a permanent solution, and that was a real strong thing that we hit on the state officials. The second initiative was allowing legal notices to be posted electronically and without having to go do paper notices, and that has, for whatever reason, not gotten out of its committees. But this year, they did establish finally a work group, which is the favorite thing in Annapolis.
The newspaper lobby.
Yeah, well, there you go. They established a work group to examine it, which is at least getting something more than what we had before, so. The famous Annapolis solution, the work group, summer work group. So that's, you know, just some idea of what we did, and, and I think, you know, I think we were listened to on quite a few things. I, I won't go into all the different stuff we covered, but it was a huge gamut of, of stuff that people were proposing, so.
I appreciate your work on that committee and those various efforts and everything you're doing on behalf of the City of Hagerstown. Any questions for Councilmember Brubaker on this initiative?
Councilmember, it might help, you touched on highway user revenue, but that's obviously a very, very significant issue for us. You want to just elaborate a little bit more on-
Right, well, let's see, we used to get around, I'm going to do these numbers from memory, the statewide municipality's got about 45 million. We were cut down to seven or nine million in the early years of the budget crisis statewide. The governor put 16 million extra in just for municipalities, not for counties, in the budget this year, and is sort of saying there'll be more next year. But the problem is, in working on permanent solutions, we want the whole 45 million restored as part of any transportation tax increase, you know, is a quid pro. I mean, the governor got a lot of support from people in municipalities and some municipalities themselves when he proposed the gas tax, but we feel it's only fair that we get a quid pro share of that. And so that's, I mean, we were pretty strong on, on that, but of course, there haven't, hasn't, there was a bill passed, but we didn't get nearly what we, we wanted, but it wasn't, it, it's also one of those, the study subjects, the highway user, as I recall. So at least it wasn't, you know, permanently, cap wasn't permanently set on, on the municipal amounts. So we should have roughly half of what we used to get. I think we put that in. And I think next year, there's a good chance we'll, we'll get that. And then after that, it's, I mean, it's really in the political arena, it's a strong thing, but we're, we're working hard to try to get a permanent solution.
And for us, what we've done, just a reminder for the council, because that has fluctu, well, it went down for several years. I mean, we were, we were down probably, what, from 2.2 million Michelle to, what was it?
Down to 3.28.
Down to 3.28.
Yeah, that was 79%.
Right. But in prior years, looking back several years ago, that, that money was going into our general fund operating budget revenue. Now it's earmarked for pavement projects, so if it fluctuates, it doesn't affect our operating revenues.
Right.
So we're in a healthier position there to absorb the losses if they, they come, but it's all on the capital side in terms of-
Right, and I've recommended that to some, some of our other place.
It protects, it protects us from what the state does, after taking a very large hit back in 2009.
But, but I can't say whether it, you know, there's, there's a lot going on for obvious reasons the next year or two, and we're trying to, you know, strike while that, while that iron's hot or whatever, you know, so.
Good work, Marty.
Yes?
This is a good piece of work.
Thanks, Doc.
You all put a lot of time and effort into this, and it shows. I can remember, it's been, as you know, it's been an ongoing issue for a long time. I can remember when Pat Paddock was Mayor of Hagerstown in 73, this, this was an issue back then even.
Right.
And if, if this were doable, certainly would solve a lot of problems for municipalities and-
Right, right, and, and we, we wound up saying, "There's no formulas going to work", and plus formulas tend to cause, makes people glaze over and what's up here. It simply says, and it's very fair-sounding, you can't tax somebody for something they're already doing.
If you could get a governor behind this, it would make a real big difference.
Yeah, well, we have to get MML consensus first.
Yes, I understand.
That's where we're starting. We're trying to get that shaped. Without that, then we can't go anywhere.
All right, well, that brings us to city administrators' comments.
None for me this evening.
Council comments, Mr. Metzner.
This morning was very nice, our employees, and Friday night is going to be a wonderful time being downtown Hagerstown for the bike races. Encourage everybody to come. I think there's over 140 people already pre-registered for the race, and last I heard, Lou Scallie said the weather was going to be wonderful.
He did, right. Mr. Brubaker?
Yeah, I want to second what, what Lou said, the congratulations to the employees that got awards this morning and looking forward to the bikes. It's sort of like having a Grand Prix or Formula One on bikes coming ripping around through your town. It's, it's a lot of fun to see that.
Less noisy than the Grand Prix, then?
Yeah, yeah, but that's part of the fascination, really. It's just kind of neat. And I want to just thank Bob Gordon, who was the director of the Hagerstown Eastern Panhandle Metropolitan Planning Organization for, actually coordinator, I tend to call him director, but his technical title was coordinator for, for many years, and he is, he is leaving to go to Africa, believe it or not. And we've appointed a staff member as acting director, but I just want to thank him for his service to the area.
Mr. Alshar.
Just wanted to say thanks to the folks out at the fire station that attended the, the, the open house on Saturday. I'd intended to go there myself and stop by and look at it, but the activities were so, so broad and, and open, you know, I called the family to come out, and we had actually planned to do something else that afternoon, but it was, it was great, the girls had a good time, and so I, I'd just like to thank all the guys for putting that together. I think that's exactly the types of things that, that, that speak to that issue of stabilization of, of those neighborhoods. And, and the place looks great. As, as a person who works for a living in, in, you know, a newer facility in my place of employment, you know, and as a commissioner, I've visited all 27 companies, and you can completely see the need out there, frankly, for, for bricks and mortar, for, for those types of stations. And so I think it was a, a good investment. I know they have some other things planned they'd like to get done, and so whatever we can do to encourage that along the way would be beneficial. The next is, I know folks have seen articles regarding the sun's relocation, and as I noted to the mayor and other members, I know it's not on our agenda tonight, and I see now that we had, you know, a, a pretty full agenda to put on, but at some point, you know, we're going to have to make some type of decision on, on the issue and, and move on, and, you know, whatever that decision may be, I've, I've laid out what I feel are, are my reasonable positions on, on the issue, and I don't see them changing much. The last item is, I know we've got some discussions later this evening on, on budgetary issues as it relates to employee compensation, and I would just say to the folks in the audience and the folks at home, you know, when, when we're talking about expense of, of public funds, I prefer those discussions to be held in public. That said, I hope everybody, and I gave a copy to, to, to a number of representatives of the employee groups, but, but I hope folks had a chance to view a copy of the, the list of proposed changes that I suggested that we look at over the next four to six months to address some of our budgetary constraints, as an effort to, to, I think, meet some of the expectations that, that folks on, on various sides of the table are talking about. As I said to the city administrator, while I don't think it gets us near, you know, near all the way to where we, where we should be getting to, I, I think it's a good effort to, you know, to start in that direction and, you know, find some compromise that I think most, most folks would agree on. And with that, that's all I have.
Mr. Munson.
I would like to concur with a couple of my fellow councilmen who talked about the events of this morning, the awards program. It was great, and we are very thankful for the outstanding services that the, that those folks and all our employees are providing to the city and to the people of Hagerstown. I'd also like to mention that I went to the band concert Sunday evening, the first in the 99th season, and the park has never looked better. Our, our park people really had it looking incredibly good. And in addition to that, the seats work, they're comfortable, and everybody was, was talking about the seats, including the director of the band, Lynn LaRue, who thanked the City of Hagerstown for its efforts in providing new seats. He specifically pointed out the, the fact that the mayor and council had made the decision to have new seats, and that was, that was very nice of him. And as a matter of fact, he said, "If you, if you know a councilman, go thank him or her."
And I've been thanked myself by a number of people.
So that was a very nice event, and everybody was talking about next year when it's the 100th anniversary of the, of the band. And the weather cooperated too.
That's always nice.
It is.
Anything else? Ms. Nye.
I just would like to know where our scheduling is for the ladder truck that was in repair. How much longer are we out? Do you know?
Yeah, I'll have to check.
Okay. And also, we have a variety shop on Antietam Street, right down from the funeral home, and we have got the really nice lights that the owner decided she needed to hook her bikes to. I have addressed this before, and I don't think that's a good thing. Those lights are very expensive.
Light poles?
Yes, and it's the ornamental light poles, and they are expensive.
So she's got things for sale attached to public equipment?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and new, new items, we're talking about too.
Yeah, but I, you know, the bikes hooked to that is a, in a brainer, you know, it's just, you don't do that. I wouldn't think. I'd like to have one of those lights in front of my house. But anyway, she sometimes also puts stuff that is not walkable for people, so it's a matter of keeping an eye on it. That's it.
Well, I also want to thank all of the employees who were recognized this morning at the service award recipients ceremony. I did the, calculated the numbers, and just with the employees who are being recognized for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service, is a total of 995 years of service by those employees, and on behalf of everybody on the council and all the citizens of Hagerstown, I want to thank those employees and all employees for their public service. It's definitely not an easy job every day, all the time, but it is certainly a necessity, and we thank you for it. Last week, I had the opportunity to be at a ribbon cutting for the Western Maryland Hospital's new fitness trail. It is a fitness trail for abled and disabled folks or wheelchair-bound folks, and I would encourage everybody to go check it out. It's behind the Memorial Gardens, and it's really wonderful. I too want to thank the Antietam Fire Company for hosting the open house, and it was a pleasure to be at the rededication ceremony for that. It is definitely an improvement in the neighborhood, and I should know, I live right across the street, and I've had the pleasure of seeing it being transformed from an old auto dealership and RV place into a, a center and hub of community activity. It's often used for community meetings, and we want to thank the Maryland delegation for making that happen, for, for the grant money that they provided. And don't forget about the criterium this Friday. Along with that is the grand opening of the Flying Pie Pizza Company down on South Potomac Street on the unit block, so it should be an exciting night this Friday.
Oh, and I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, Flag Day is also Friday.
That's true.
And that will be at 3:30 at the University Plaza.
3:30 University Plaza, Flag Day Ceremony. Thank you, Penny. And with that, I do want to address Councilmember Alshar, I was concerned about the executive session in the ground rules that were agreed to by the city negotiating team and the collective bargaining teams. It does say that after June 1st, the chief negotiators and the city should, shall meet with the City of Hagerstown mayor and council during executive session to discuss extending the current contract. And also, it says the public statement will be avoided by both parties until the negotiations are completed, so I think that is the reason for our executive session tonight, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So we have four ayes and one no. All right, we will be in executive session. Thank you.